All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the June 16th Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to order. And I will open up my notes here and we'll get started. If I can find them, I had them open. Here we go. All right, let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Chairman Lindblum.
I am here.
Vice Chair Slasher. Commissioner Arnett.
Here.
Commissioner Swart.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner McGee.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Montoya.
Here.
Commissioner Dan Zeissin. Chairman, we do have a quorum.
Perfect, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and read these announcements that this meeting has been noticed in accordance with open meeting laws. Arizona Vice Statute, Section 38-431. Agendas are available within 24 hours of each meeting in the Maricopa County Planning and Development Office. And they're also available on the Planning and Development website one week prior to the hearing at maricopa.gov backslash planning. Staff reports are prepared each agenda. The staff reports prepared for each agenda item shall become part of the permanent record for each case. And with respect to the hearing process, cases will be considered in the order they appear on the agenda unless otherwise agreed to by the commission. For each case, the applicant will be given a set amount of time to present. Anyone wishing to speak on a particular item can, on a particular case, shall fill out a speaker's card for in-person attendance or raise your hand within the go-to webinar. I have a couple that have been filled out today, and if you're here and haven't filled that one, wish to speak. If you're not the applicant, please do so. The amount of time allowed for speaking shall be at the discretion of the commission chair. And staff will provide the chairman with the names of persons who have registered and noted desire to comment, and those registered participants who have raised their hand. The chairman will call on each named participant one at a time. Yeah, I'm, this is long when you're out of shape. And the chairman will conduct the hybrid in-person and virtual public hearing according to the bylaws and according to the rules established by the chairman regarding public comment. Votes will be done by a roll call vote only, and the chairman will verbally identify the specific members responsible for all motions and seconds. So, getting all that legal stuff out of the way. We're glad you're here and look forward to hearing from each of you. We'll go ahead and present the minutes for May 12, 2022. If there's any comments from the commission, please let those know now. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and approve those. And we'll move into the continuance portion of our agenda. Do we have any continuance items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Z 2021-133, known as Val Vista 1 in District 1, which is a C-2 CPD rezone, is to be continued to July 7. And Z 2021-162, known as Brown Family Project, also in District 1, a C-2 CPD rezone, is to be continued to August 4.
Okay. Yeah, no, no action items for that at this time. We'll go ahead and continue those items. Moving into our consent agenda order, I believe there were some comments by, well, are there any, before we jump into that, are there any comments that need to be made on consent? I think Commissioner Montoya mentioned earlier that there were.
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on just a second, Commissioner Montoya, go ahead and.
I believe Commissioner Montoya had some questions. I didn't know if you wanted me to give a quick presentation.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't you jump through those and then we'll, we'll address them as we need to.
There are seven items on consent. Quickly, they are S 2021-035, known as Sunset Ridge in District 5. This is a 354-lot preliminary plat in the R5 zoning district on 70.6 acres at the southwest corner of Broadway and 83rd Avenue. There's no known opposition. In paragraph 11, the recommendations for approval, subject conditions A through L. Z 2022-047, known as Crown 826829 Menshall in District 4, it's a special use permit for a wireless communication facility in the Rural 43 zoning district specifically to add an additional 25 years to the validity period. This is on a 1,030-acre lease site northwest of the northwest corner of Citrus and Harrison Street. Again, no known opposition, recommendations for approval, subject conditions A through I in paragraph 17. Z 2022-049, known as Castle Hot Spring, Morristown WCF in District 4, is a special use permit modification of conditions for an additional 25-year validity period. This is in the Rural 43 WHSC zoning district, that means the Wickmore Highway San Corridor. It's a one-acre site northwest of the northwest corner of Gates Road in US 60. No known opposition. In paragraph 11, the recommendations for approval, subject conditions A through F. Z 2022-050, known as Crown Castle 879296, Snow, District 4, is also a modification of conditions of a special use permit for an additional 25-year validity period for a wireless communication facility in the Rural 190 zoning district on approximately 2,500-acre lease site south of the southeast corner of State Route 74 and 211th Avenue in Morristown. There's no known opposition, the recommendation is for approval, subject conditions A through F in paragraph 11. Z 2022-059, known as Kremlin Dairy East Digital Billboard in District 1, is a special use permit to convert a illegal non-conforming static billboard to a digital face on a one-plus acre site west of the southwest corner of Loop 202 and McQueen Road. There's no known opposition, the recommendation in paragraph 10 is for approval, subject conditions A through E. Z 2022-027, known as the Enclave at Anthem in District 3, it's a special use permit major amendment to add 10 additional Rojo casitas to a residential facility in the CO SUP zoning district on a 1.4-acre site, the southwest corner of Anthem Way and Venture Drive. There's no known opposition, the recommendation in paragraph 17 is for approval, subject conditions A through G. And finally, MCP 2022-001, known as RV Storage DICER in District 4, it's a military compatibility permit with a planned development for an RV and boat storage facility on a 35.4-acre site in the Rural 43 MAA MF zoning district, the southwest corner of Olive and DICER. There's no known opposition. In paragraph 18, the recommendations for approval, subject conditions A through F. Happy to answer any questions.
You can turn my mic on. You did that a lot better than I did. I want you to go run a few laps around the building and then we'll see how you do.
I'll, I'll speed walk it.
All right, having, thank you for that presentation. Is there any comments at this time from the commission on these consent agenda items? Commissioner Montoya, did you have any?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on case number S 2021-035, Sunset Ridge. Wanted to know what is the timeframe for Phase 1 and Phase 2?
Okay, if, under this, would we need to just pull this off consent to address that question? Or do you know that timeframe, Mr. Chairman?
I believe, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Montoya, I believe that we are, it's possible we are gonna see them develop concurrent. The preliminary plat is valid for a two-year period. It can be extended for an additional year. And then if that first phase is developed, then there will be additional two-year validity period for the second phase. But it could be that both phases come in concurrent at the same time.
Does that satisfy your question?
Yes, and then I have two more questions very quickly. Wanted to know about the 83rd realignment, and is that in Phase 2 or in Phase 1?
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I am having to look, but I believe that it's Phase 1.
And my last question is, there's mention of a traffic control signal. Will that include a left-turn lane?
Commissioner Montoya, I, if there's a signal, it certainly will be full-term movements.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Montoya. Any other questions, or if not, I'll propose a motion. Entertain a motion, sorry, I'll propose one.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner McGee.
Go ahead, Commissioner McGee.
I'm gonna give it a try. I, I move approval of consent agenda items 1 through 9 as presented.
Sorry to interrupt you, it would be item number 3 would be your start.
Item number 3 as presented. I'm sorry, I thought we didn't have to pull it off.
No problem. Yeah, it's 3 through 9.
I'm sorry, I move approval of consent agenda items 3 through 9 as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner McGee, we have a motion. Commissioner Swart, did I see you second that? You're on mute, can you just unmute and say that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, we have a second from Commissioner Swart. Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Approved.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya.
Yes.
Chairman Lindblum.
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval of the consent agenda by a vote of 7 to 0.
All right, with a vote of 7 to 0, we will approve those consent items and we'll move on to our regular agenda items, those that came for those consents. Thank you for being here, you're welcome to go get on to your business, other places. Thank you for being patient with me today, appreciate it. All right, we'll jump into regular agenda order, item number 10, CPA 2022-004. I believe Mr. Ray, you're gonna, Mr. Ray Banker's gonna present that.
Yes, good morning, Chairman Lindblum and members of the commission. We're actually gonna do a presentation for the next five items, so.
Thank you.
Today, we'll be discussing items number 10 to 14 of the agenda, which are staff's proposals to decommission five area plans, and I'll read these cases for the record. So it'll be CPA 2022-004, the Levine area plan. We also have CPA 2022-005, the Estrella area plan, CPA 2022-006, the Mobile area plan, CPA 2022-007, the East Mesa area plan, and the, finally, the CPA 2022-008, Queen Creek area plan. So those five, we'll all do in this presentation today. I'll change the slide here.
Great.
So this is the map of the current area plan boundaries and locations within the county. There are 13 active area plans right now, so we're just gonna discuss five of those today. We can refer this map, you know, throughout this presentation if needed. And so, an introduction to this, I actually did a presentation in front of you all last August in the zipper committee meeting, where we presented all the current area plan analysis and research that we did. This research established several criteria with which staff evaluated the status of each area plan, which included how much of each area plan has been annexed into, you know, municipalities. We also looked at how much CPAs and DMPs were approved, so pretty much large-scale requests for changes within, you know, a 10-year period. Also, growth potential and unique factors within each area plan. And then finally, the easiest for us to identify was how old, you know, each of these plans are and their most recent updates. So, those are kind of the four criteria we looked at when we were doing that study. Our general findings that we found were that five of these area plans, which is the subject of today, were very outdated with the latest update, you know, adopted or happened 30 years ago at least. And because of that, these plans do not represent the existing conditions of these areas, given that 58 to 89% of these planned areas have since been annexed into cities or towns, you know, which we all know is happening, it continues to happen, that's not controlled by the county as far as annexation goes. So, so that's what our general findings were from that study, research. So, this is the spreadsheet table that we came up with. We had that in our last presentation back in the zipper meeting. You were provided this as well in a memo handout that Darren sent out the other day. And pretty much this table, we're gonna be focusing on those five highlighted plans in yellow there at the top. So we can refer to this chart as, as needed, you know, throughout, and this, and we'll go through each of these area plans, you know, summaries for each of these area plans for all those criteria of these next few slides. Okay, so we're gonna start. So, first off, this is the Levine area plan, adopted back in 1992, has not been updated since. It encompasses about 27 square miles, is, but is already 70 to 71% annexed in the city of Phoenix, with only approximately eight square miles left within county jurisdiction. What we see is mostly rural densities and open space, land used as a nation south of Dobbins Road, as well as small lot residential near 67th Avenue and baseline. But the remaining unincorporated land is mostly north of southern, near the river. So, where we see mostly open space, industrial zoning, as well as related land uses existing today. So that's summary of what's there in the Levine area plan. Also, just northwest of the Levine area plan is the Estrella area plan. We have, you know, the same adoption date as 1992, so 30 years ago, and also has not been updated since. This plan is approximately 25 square miles, approximately 60% has since been annexed into multiple jurisdictions. That includes Phoenix to the east, Avondale to the west, and portions of Tolles to the north. The major portion of this 10 square miles left in this plan is along the southern portion of the plan boundary, and that's also adjacent to the Salt River, just like in the Levine area plan. So these properties, net area mostly open space, rural densities, including mostly vacant and undeveloped properties and agricultural uses otherwise. Okay, and moving on, we then see one of the most remote area plans in the county, the Mobile area plan. Southern portion of the county, which was adopted back in 1991, already has approximately 90%, 89 or 90% of the total land area annexed in the city of Goodyear. It appears that a large amount of land was annexed in 2007 for a master plan community, but that has never developed, so, you know, it's still within the city's limits. However, this area has been known as an established African-American community for nearly 100 years. Only four square miles remain within the county, and this includes an approximate 1,000-acre landfill site, which is entitled to a special use permit. So, not much other land otherwise in the county jurisdiction. So the next area plan we're gonna discuss is the, we're moving east now, is the East Mesa area plan, also adopted back in 1992, so again, 30 years ago, not been updated since. Total of 96 square miles within this plan area, has been around, or has seen around 58% of the land annexed in the city of Mesa jurisdiction, for the portion of the southwest area of the plan, within the town of Gilbert as well. So, but most of that plan area, the northeast, if you can see that large area in white, is the Usery Mountain Regional Park, so that encompasses about 3,650 acres as well in the northeast quadrant there. And although, you know, we see most of the activity around the Apache Trail area of the plan, where there's still strip commercials zoning along the arterials, and although, you know, 40, 40 square miles exist, again, that's, a lot of it's a regional park as well, so. And then the last one, we'll mention here, I can get the slide to change, is the Queen Creek area plan, also adopted back in 92. This plan includes several annexing municipalities, including Queen Creek, Mesa, Gilbert, and Chandler. Only around 14 square miles of this 92-square-mile area remains in the county jurisdiction. This equates to approximately 85% of the plan area already incorporated. And although there are portions along Santana Boulevard and Riggs Road that include commercial and residential land uses, and zoning is still in the county jurisdiction, you know, there's been several projects recently that have been annexed as well. So, so that concludes, you know, the five plans there that we are considering for decommission. So, in conclusion with this presentation today, so we identified these five plans of the 13 existing area plans within the county. You know, we are basing this decommission off that criteria we established that we discussed last year at the zipper meeting. These five plans haven't been updated, or were adopted almost 30 years ago, where more than 58% and up to 89% of each plan area have been annexed to municipalities. And also, there's, had been minimal land use designation activity, meaning the lack of CPAs and DMPs in the last 10 years. These plans are decommissioned. An important fact would be that the county jurisdiction properties within these areas or area plan boundaries would be changed to rural development area, or RDA, with a denser range of 0 to 1 dwelling units per acre. And this is significant to note, given that these unincorporated areas would remain with the lowest intensity and density land use designation, which, you know, if there are any proposed changes in the future, require a public hearing process for requested changes if there's zoning or land use proposals that may not fit with an RDA land use designations within that category. Although, it should be noted that this will not affect current zoning that's already been approved and on-site. Lastly, staff would also like to include in the future, next two to three years, a county island study with a future update to the comprehensive plan. This study would focus on the following, would also include unincorporated areas within, lands within these area plan boundaries. So we'd like to focus in the future on providing up-to-date information on existing conditions, including utilities and services within these areas. We would analyze future development requests to understand what, and if, or if anything is feasible within existing land use, or within existing county islands, and how to encourage annexation when needed. We would set specific strategies and policies and goals for different types, sizes, and locations of these county islands, and this will help guide proposals to viable development options if available on these areas. And lastly, it would help promote a comprehensive approach to understand the current state of these county islands and to outline possible solutions to, to the future from a policy and guideline perspective. So, again, that would be kind of wrapped in with a comprehensive plan, and the study would include these areas as well. And again, we don't believe that these, these area plans, area plans really represent these areas because of all the changes in the last 30 years. So, so that concludes my presentation. Appreciate your time today. You know, if the commission would like to make a motion on any of these, please do so separately, because there are five different CPA cases. And with that being said, we can answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff at this time based on that presentation? I have, I have one. So, we're essentially decommissioning these existing plans. If I heard you right, the intent is to create some new plans that are more up-to-date at a future point, that's a, like a more comprehensive plan? Is it, your comprehensive plan, is it a county as a whole, or separate plans for these areas? Like, what does that look like?
Yes, Chairman Lindblum, yeah, essentially, so we have a comprehensive plan update happening soon. So we'd wrap in a county island study within that comprehensive plan, which would not only include, you know, others of the county that are within county islands, but also, these are all county islands as well, because they're within future annexable areas of all these municipalities. So, so it would, you know, we don't have the full details of it, but essentially, we'd be, you know, making sure that we cover existing conditions, as well as coming up with policy and goals that would be more representative of the specifics of these areas as well. So, I don't know if you wanted to add to that, Darren, or?
Mr. Chairman, we do not foresee new plans specific to these areas.
Okay.
But there may be policies that address these specific areas, or areas of the county, such as, similar to these.
Yeah, that makes sense. So, well, the valley has certainly changed since 1990s, early 90s, so it makes sense to come up with a different way to address it, and especially with the percentage of annexation in a lot of these areas. You have a lot of little county islands all over, and so I get the point of having better information on what's still out there and how to address those as a whole for the county and that, and it sounds like that's what you're working towards doing. Any other questions at this time from the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Arnett.
Just a clarification with staff, I, thank you, I mean, so much work goes into this, and we, I know that was a quick summary, but thanks, Ray, a lot of effort, thanks for all the good work. But my question, we're going from a decommissioning these plans to policies. If, if someone came to as a zoning case that was kind of contrary to those policies, if you, would that be administrative? I guess it's just the zoning case, you know, in the past, we've done plan amendments. Give me an idea of what that looks like going forward for some of these islands that we're gonna have these policies. Are they just guidelines? Like, is there any change in, or is it just a simple zoning case that there, we don't need to, obviously, we don't need to change policies? Does that question make sense?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Arnett, this is Darren. Same as today, if someone comes in with a, with any type of proposal, and they require a change in zoning, we're going to review that against our comprehensive plan and any applicable land use plan for compatibility, and we review against the preponderance of goals and policies to make sure that the preponderance of goals are met. So that will be, that will not change, that will still be the same. There will not be a specific land use plan, subject to most of these areas, if they weren't already subject of a CPA or DMP case in the past. There will be, they will default to what's called rural development area, which essentially requires development to remain under 1 dwelling per acre. Therefore, any rezone of these areas is likely to trigger some type of comp plan amendment to go along as a companion to that rezone. And so those will be public notice, public hearings, and that's the same condition that exists in most of our county.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner McGee.
Oh, thank you, sir. I really like the idea, and granted, I'm still very new at this, but shifting from the plans to a county island's study, when will that be completed? And would it be across the county, or just simply these areas? I think that's a much more articulated approach, as best as I understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McGee. Darren, did you want to answer that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McGee, we'll likely start studies as part of the comprehensive plan update process over the next year, and then it'll be a couple-year process, so one to three years.
And, Mr. Chairman, and Darren, will we, would the commission be receiving updates? Or, I'm trying to figure out what the substitute review process would be. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McGee, yes, you will be involved in, in the comprehensive plan. You will be presented drafts and be given regular updates, usually at our zipper work session meetings. But again, the review process for development proposals within these geographic areas will be as they are for most of Maricopa County. You'll, you will still see anything that requires a change in zoning entitlement, you see, and we will review that against the existing policies and the comprehensive plan to make sure a preponderance of those policies are furthered with the change. And if not, you will see comprehensive plan amendments, companion to zoning cases. But that's the same thing that happens today in most of Maricopa County. There just will not be a specific lane. There just will not be a specific land use plan for these areas. They will default to rural development area, which, uh, is the default land use category for most of unincorporated counties.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you, Commissioner McGee. Any other questions? All right. Um, I am thinking how to handle this. So, this is on regular agenda item. Is there, um, I think for time purposes, we can continue to, um, address these altogether, even from the general body. We, we can open up to public comment and, uh, if there is a need to get very specific, we can and I'll make that decision at that point. But is there anyone from the public that has presented themselves as liking to speak on this, these proposed changes? Staff, you aware of anybody? Anybody here? All right, that made that part easy. Um, all right, well, uh, we do need to address each of these individually, so let's go ahead and, um, I would be willing to entertain motions. Uh, let's, for me just to keep my head straight, uh, we could start with item number ten, CPA two thousand twenty-two zero zero four, the Levine area plan. Is there anyone, uh, who will need to make a discussion or willing to make a motion at this time?
Yeah, this is Commissioner.
I heard a couple, so, um, uh, I'll start this way. Any comments first or are we?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, was that Commissioner Montoya?
Correct.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, yes, uh, I, uh, make a motion on that we approve CPA two zero two-two zero zero four to decommission the Levine area plan.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Montoya. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Swart. Commissioner Swart has seconded that. Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Approved.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Chairman Lindblom?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to agenda item number twelve, CPA two thousand twenty-two zero zero six, the mobile, mobile area plan. Do we have any comments or someone willing to make a motion?
Chairman, this is Commissioner Hernandez. I think we skipped CPA two zero two-two zero zero five, but I would, uh, make a motion to approve CPA two zero two-two zero zero five, the Estrella area plan, uh, to decommission that as presented. I second that motion.
Thanks for catching that. So, um, yeah, number, for clarity, number eleven CPA two thousand twenty-two zero zero five, Estrella area plan. We have, um, a motion from Chairman, Commissioner Hernandez and a second, Commissioner Montoya. And we'll go ahead and take a vote if there's not. I didn't, I want to make sure there aren't any comments for, uh, or as well, but hearing none, we'll, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote on that.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Approved.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Chairman Lindblom?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of seven to zero.
I thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez, for catching that. Uh, item number twelve CPA two thousand twenty-two zero zero six, uh, mobile area plan. Any comments or motion at this time?
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve CPA two zero two-two zero zero six to decommission the mobile area plan.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner, uh, Montoya. Did I hear a second by Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
All right, and a second by Commissioner Swart. Do a roll, roll call vote, Rosalie.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Chairman Lindblom?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Perfect. Moving on to agenda item number thirteen CPA two thousand twenty-two zero zero seven, the East Mesa area plan. Any comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that. Uh, gen item number thirteen.
All right, so we have a motion to approve CPA two thousand twenty-two zero zero seven, East Mesa area plan by Commissioner Arnett. Do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Hernandez, I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez, who seconded that. Let's go ahead and do a roll, roll call vote.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Chairman Lindblom?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Great, thank you. Uh, moving on to agenda order, uh, agenda item number fourteen CPA two thousand twenty-two zero zero eight, the Queen Creek area plan. Do we have a motion or, um, or, um, comments? This is my district, I'm happy to make that motion. I'll make the motion to approve CPA two thousand twenty-two zero zero eight.
I'll second that, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Swart. Do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya? Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Chairman Lindblom?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you. And thank you to staff for working hard on these types of issues to keep our county current and moving forward. Thank you, Ray, for all your work on that and everybody. All right, we'll move on to, um, agenda item number fifteen, uh, Z two thousand twenty-one one five zero, the Desert Hills RV and Boat Storage. Um, we'll have a presentation by staff at this time.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioners, Z two thousand twenty-one one fifty, known as Desert Hills RV and Boat Storage Facility in District Three, is a special use permit for commercial storage of RVs, boats and vehicles in the Rural Forty-three zoning district on a four-point-seven acre site at the northeast corner of Carefree Highway and Central Avenue. The proposal includes eighty-eight uncovered spaces surrounded by an eight-foot solid wall. Access will be off of Central, uh, which will have an eight-foot-high, uh, sign, uh, proximate to the driveway. There will be a five-foot strip of, uh, natural desert landscaping along Carefree Highway, um, which is minimal requirement in keeping with the, uh, senior corridor. There is one letter of opposition, uh, general concern, uh, but the New River Desert Hills Community Association, uh, has, uh, had concerns that have all been addressed in the proposed site plan and the county's area plan designates the site for commercial uses. Therefore, the recommendation, paragraph sixteen is for approval, subject to conditions A through L. I'm happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Oops, thank you for that. Um, any, uh, questions for staff at this time?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, go ahead.
McGee? Um, the letter of opposition, it, it seems more generalized as opposed to directed at this facility, um, related to additional traffic development, et cetera, in the area. At least that's how I perceive it. How have those requests been handled? Uh, are they, are they going to, at some point, install traffic signal, pave? Um, I mean, it, some of it's just outside the purview of, of development, so to speak, or our, our commission. So I'm trying to figure out where those requests, um, wind up and how are they being treated?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McGee, yes, staff took that as a, just a general opposition to development in the area. But in specific regard to this case, uh, you know, the applicants submit drainage reports and transportation, uh, impact reports. And, uh, in this instance, they're, they're going to have, they're going to pave their access, uh, within the right-of-way. The improvements on Central Avenue and Carefree that exist today are sufficient to accommodate this, this facility. Improvements are done based upon, uh, traffic generated by a project at the time that that development occurs and that's based upon the engineered, uh, traffic studies that are reviewed by, uh, uh, that discipline here in the county. And I hope that answers your question.
Sir, it does. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McGee. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll allow the applicant to speak if they'd like to present on it.
Oh, hello, this is Troy Burleson, presenting on behalf of the Desert Hills Boat and RV Storage.
Great, glad to have you here today.
We, uh, we tried to address this guy, this, the opposition's comments and I kind of think they're a little bit self-serving because he runs, uh, or he lives a couple, couple lots away and he runs like a, a, a dancing venue with an open bar at his, at his house. So I think, I think, I think those, those concerns were a little bit self-serving, not specific to the site.
All right, um, would you like to present anything else on your case? Thanks for noting your, your thoughts on that. Is there anything else you'd like to talk about on the project at this time?
Uh, pretty, pretty cut and dry, pretty simple. I think you guys did a great presentation.
Okay, thank you, um, for, for that. Well, um, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this, um, case here in person? I don't see any. Is there any online?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Commissioner Swart, go ahead.
I have no idea who this gentleman is. Is he an attorney? Is he a consultant? Is he the property owner? I don't know anything, uh, as a reference.
Thank you, Commissioner Swart. Um, the gentleman that just spoke, could you say your name and, um, address and where, where, um, how, how you're related to the project?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought that came...
I usually ask that and I forgot, I apologize.
I apologize, I thought that was all already on there. Um, I'm the property owner. My name is Troy Burleson.
Okay.
Um, there's two, there's two owners, I'm one of two.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions at this time, Commissioner Swart?
Chairman Lindblom, we're not aware of any others from the virtual side that want to speak.
Okay, perfect. Well, then, um, we'll go ahead and close the, are there, uh, any other questions by the commission for the applicant? Hearing none, we'll close, uh, public comment and, um, we'll, uh, we can s- speak about this amongst ourselves or entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Swart?
I'll make a motion for item fifteen for approval, as the staff's previous stipulations.
Okay, we have a motion for approval from Commissioner Swart for item Z two thousand twenty-one one five zero, Desert Hills RV and Boat Storage as presented by staff. I got your motion correct. Um, do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to make the motion, but I will second. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner McGee. We have a, a, a strong second, we'll call it. Um, all right, well, let's do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Chairman Lindblom?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, uh, Rosalie. All right, let's move on to agenda, uh, item number sixteen, Z two thousand twenty-one one two seven, this, this bond residence, if I'm saying that right. And we'll go have, go ahead and have a presentation by staff at this time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, Z two thousand twenty-one one two seven, this bond residence is in District Three. It's a special use permit for cottage industry, uh, a granite countertop cutting business in the Rural Forty-three zoning district on a one-point-six acre site north of the northeast corner of Irvine and Fifteenth Avenue in the Desert Hills area. Uh, the proposal includes the, uh, storage of granite and quartz slabs, cutting and polishing and polishing of same. Uh, site screening would be a six-foot CMU wall surrounding the, uh, yard. The, uh, newer, Daisy Mountain New River area plan designates this area for rural densities of up to one dwelling per acre. There is significant opposition. As of today's handout, you have thirty-five pieces of opposition, nine properties within three hundred feet. Staff's not aware of any project support, uh, recommendations for denial. This is an industrial operation surrounded by single-family residences on one acre lots. Um, in addition to the sound generated by the stone cutting, they're operating off a generator in a shop, uh, in a shop building that was permitted as residential garage for storage, uh, without utilities or electric. You can see in paragraph twelve, uh, regarding opposition concerns and those, um, are fairly numerous, uh, I'm sorry, uh, I said paragraph twelve, uh, I'll read those. Uh, paragraph twelve on page nine of fifteen of your report, and again, this is the, this is the gist of the neighborhood concerns. Excessive noise, humming and vibration associated with the generator and material handling activities. Frequent semi-truck traffic including horn honking, reverse gear alarms and backing into Fifteenth Avenue from the subject property. Silica dust exposure to workers and neighbors, excessive water use, noise from scrap material being dropped into dumpster, possible occupation of an RV on the property. The neighbors indicate the wall's been increased to a height of eight feet with blacktop pavement without permits. Um, the granite materials are unloaded by use of crane and forklifts. Public safety is a concern related to the trucks entering and exiting the facility. Traffic is blocked when semi-trucks are backing into the facility. Fifteenth Avenue is not designated for this type of heavy industrial traffic. There are school-aged children that have to walk across the street, which puts them at risk. There's excessive smell related to the loud unloading, um, of materials, uh, from the diesel trucks with, uh, engines running. Uh, the diesel generator runs eight to nine hours a day, emits fumes and there are additional chemicals utilized. Uh, foam sheets are used to protect the stones, which usually get blown by the wind and end up in adjacent yards and throughout the neighborhood. The neighbors have also stated the subject property's on a shared well, not City of Phoenix Water, as indicated by the applicant. Uh, the New River Desert Hills Community Association issued a letter, uh, stating these similar concerns. Uh, outstanding review agencies, uh, have, there are outstanding concerns from county review agencies. No county review agency has signed off on approval for this request. Um, engineering has indicated the applicant's not submitted the required grading and drainage plan. Uh, environmental services, um, references the discrepancy by the applicant sitting water service to be provided by City of Phoenix, ensued by an unknown provider, uh, whereas the site is on a shared well and, uh, and the only wastewater available to the site would have to be onsite, uh, subject system. The, uh, Daisy Mountain Fire Department has, um, not received any contact from exclusive zone for fire coverage and have indicated that an operation permit and fire life safety inspections would be required. Essentially, uh, as, uh, you know, the analysis, staff analysis beginning in paragraph eighteen, but, uh, and, and runs for a couple pages, but essentially... but, uh, and, and runs for a couple pages, but essentially, this appears to be a very intense industrial use that does not fit within the low-intensity rural neighborhood land use patterns. The owner continues to operate the business in violation of the county zoning ordinance. There is a verified zoning violation on the property. The hearing officer established a deadline of October, of, I'm sorry, of August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, to obtain a special use permit approval from the board supervisors or to cease and desist the use. Beginning in, 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 in paragraph twenty-four, staff lists, um, thirty-two reasons for denying this SUP request. Now, I'll read those into the record. Uh, reviewing county agencies, which include planning, engineering, environmental services, have all have objections that are outstanding in this application. This appears to be a commercial industrial use framed as a home occupation in a low-density rural residential area. The owner continues to operate the business in violation of the zoning ordinance without obtaining entitlement. The owner has made no attempt to work with the neighbors to cease to this operation of the business until determination is made on the SUP. The use is too intense, arguably, for a cottage industry. Again, it is, uh, more of, uh, rather than a home-based business, it appears to be a business that may have someone living at it. The, uh, due to the number of delivery trucks, operation of the business, manufacturing, waste disposal, cutting and sawing stone using onsite generator, the use is associated with an industrial zoning district comparable to industrial two zoning, not Rule forty-three zoning. The zoning ordinance defines Rule forty-three to conserve and protect farms and other open land uses, foster orderly growth in rural areas, prevent urban and agricultural land use conflicts, and encourage sustainable development. Staff does not believe this furthers that goal. Staff's not able to confirm the owner resides onsite, which is a cottage industry prerequisite. It's unclear on the number of deliveries per week and times for deliveries, number of projects being worked on per day, et cetera. Uh, the hours of operation and days of operation are not identified. Waste disposal and water filtration system is not clearly addressed. There's no discussion on the chemicals and materials being used in the operations onsite. Uh, the excess waste and roll-off dumpster, uh, how many times is this cleared from the property, uh, on a regular basis? Uh, additional onsite improvements without obtaining permitting, such as the increase to the CMU walls and the wooden pallets. And I, I apologize. There's, some of these are phrases rather than complete sentences, but there are wooden pallets to screen the southern region of the site rather than CMU walls, what I'm reading. There's an RV onsite. The application does not address if there's someone residing onsite, but there are claims that there are occupied, uh, occupied RV and/or trailer. The additional right-of-way dedication would be required along Fifteenth Avenue. The site plan does not account for future McGott right-of-way, uh, for this midsection alignment. The Arizona Register of Contractors identified two licenses with physical address of the subject site. Staff finds the intensity of the business activities are incompatible with the existing land use patterns, even if the generator is replaced with a higher amperage electrical service panel. Existing use is industrial nature does not meet the SUP standards for businesses compatible in Rule forty-three. The application is also deficient in grading drainage plans, retention plans, existing water wastewater service explanation. The public opposition to the request due to the ongoing granite shopper operations and excessive noise and impacts to the residences is significant and seems to constitute, uh, the vast majority of the neighborhood. There's opposition from the New River Desert Hills Community Association, the local community group. Uh, the narrative and site plan discrepancies, um, remain with explaining business operation and identifying structures onsite. The potential for water use not established with the well-water agreement with the neighbors is, uh, remains a concern. There's discrepancies with utility services for water and wastewater. Grading drainage plan is not submitted, uh, with three different iterations of, of application for review. Aerial imagery of the site shows disturbance exceeds fifty-hundred square feet that requires engineered plans for review and identify parking, driveways, and retention basins. Daisy Mountain Fire has not received any contract for fire coverage and permitting. The midsection alignment would require forty-foot half-foot dedication. Site plan does not account for future right-of-way. Uh, the staff's not able to confirm existing uses with, uh, conform with the regulations outlined in chapter thirteen, uh, for special uses. Uh, the site is non-compliant at present with the zoning ordinance. Uh, again, there's unlawful use of the land occurring at present. The existing industrial use is not suitable. In the existing rural zoned community with single-family residential housing, the use has resulted in the direct impact to the neighbors and the rural community as a nuisance with noise, dust, and traffic. Use is an industrial use that should be established within industrial zoning industry, not within Rule forty-three as the cottage industry home-based SUP. The use does not protect the character of the rural community, is not promote peace, safety, welfare as defined in the purpose statement of the zoning ordinance in general. Uh, for that reason, for those reasons, the recommendation of paragraph twenty-five is to deny Z two thousand twenty-one, one twenty-seven. Further in paragraph twenty-six, you'll note that if the commission considers a motion for approval, you will need to formulate conditions. Staff is unable to even offer conditions at this point because no review in the HCS signed up on the proposal. It, uh, remains administratively incomplete. It is being processed because of lack of progress and, um, if this case is disposed of through the board, uh, staff will just continue pursuing code enforcement based upon the hearing officer's judgment. Now, I'm happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chairman, uh, thank you, Darren. Call you Darren today. Um, is the applicant, uh, here today or online? You are? Would you like to speak?
Yes. Can you all hear me?
I, uh, is it, who's gonna, would, uh, so I have somebody online, it sounds like, and I have somebody here in person. Who, who's online right now or, or?
Well, uh, the person online is Daniel Estrate. Uh, I am the architect on the project. Uh, Daniel Estrate with Pen Texture. Uh, address is three, three, four, North twentieth Street, uh, Phoenix, Arizona, eight five zero one six. I'm the applicant and the architect. The person in presence is the owner. I have him there in case, uh, we have any additional questions for the owner. So the owner is in the audience. I couldn't make it in person, so I had to call, uh, and, and, uh, virtually for the meeting. So, uh, as mentioned, I was the applicant. And, uh, uh, good morning, everybody. I'll give a, a quick, um, presentation and address some of the items brought up by both the, uh, the letters, uh, letters of opposition, describe a little bit about the process and also the points brought up by the, by the county official. I think there were, um, so when the owner bought the property, I would like to state that the existing, um, shed that there's, is being used was there on the property. Uh, it wasn't built by the owner. It was there. Somebody was operating that as a, uh, as a shop, uh, to fix cars, I believe, before. So when the owner moved in there, uh, they looked in the county's rural regulation and there was no exceptions stating, uh, stating that you cannot use, um, that a granite shop was not one of the permitted uses. So I just wanted to stand that, uh, state that. The applicant, uh, the owner who's in the audience, and I'll let him, uh, identify himself if need be, does live on the property and so does his daughter. Uh, so, uh, the county making statements that they don't know who occupies the property, that's incorrect because at every time we made a supplemental, we made it very clear that the owner lives on the property, his daughter lives there and her son-in-law. Uh, and this is a family-owned and family-run business. There's only three employees. It's the, the father, uh, the, uh, he, the son works for him and the son-in-law works for him. So it's, they, there aren't any employees that drive into work. It's the, again, the husband with the two. So there's a total of three people that work in that building, hardly a industrial, uh, operation by any standard when you have three people working, uh, um, on it. Uh, uh, the reason, they, the way the, the project started was they were trying to actually get power from, uh, from the power company so they wouldn't have, obviously it's not an efficient way to run a business on a generator. They were trying to get power and then the, uh, power company told them you'll need to get a permit. So then, when they applied for the permit, is when they were told that they, uh, they, uh, they need to get a special use permit. Uh, I also wanted to, since that was the number, one of the complaints was running to generator, their intent was never to, uh, run the generator full-time. The intent was once we have a special use permit, we'll apply for an actual building permit and that will allow them to, uh, to get a power upgrade. In the meantime, for the past two weeks, and I think the owner in, uh, in the audience has the paperwork, uh, he was able to actually, uh, modify and install a motor inside the facility so the generator hasn't been in use and is no longer being used, which was one of the concerns. Uh, one of the other concerns was also with silica dust. Um, I want to let the board know and any of the, which we've already let all the neighbors know before, if anybody wants to go and see or has ever been inside of a, a shop, uh, the granite is cut with the water jet, uh, cut. So it's not a, it's not a dry cut that, um, emits dust. It's like, if anybody's familiar with water jet, it's just water pressure. And basically the dust gets, uh, it, it doesn't get pulverized and it's basically just turns into the, uh, into the, it gets combined with the water. So it's not a fine dust as, as described. I would, I would venture to say that all the host properties around it emit way more dust than any of the, of the cutting. Just want to state that. And then as far as the, uh, as far as the, uh, deliveries, they, um, they get deliveries once a month or every two months where they just unload them, uh, unload them with forklift, not the cranes with forklifts into, uh, into pallets. And then some of them just get shipped direct. Uh, most of them actually, when they come in, they've already been pre-cut and they're being delivered to a job. They just need to be put on smaller trucks to take into, uh, uh, take into whatever jobs they're being, uh, they're being installed. So the, uh, as mentioning, it's run by three people, the, the father with, uh, has the son and the son-in-law. Uh, they no longer use it, the generator, they've installed a motor to operate the machine. The machine uses water to cut the granite, um, which also mediates the, uh, any dust. And then another thing to mention is there's two different procedures that I, I hope, uh, the, the board understands. When you first use, uh, uh, when working on the application, they were giving us a, a list of required, uh, information and paperwork to, uh, to submit. Uh, you first need to get a special use permit, uh, uh, approved. And then once that gets approved, you then actually submit construction documents. Those construction documents are the ones that will include the information on grading and drainage and all the rest of it. But also as a side note, uh, to include information on grading and drainage on the property that's existing, the building that they're operating in is existing. So no work was done on the, uh, no work was done on the property, uh, although we will submit a grading and drainage, uh, plan, but no work has been done on it to garner a graining and drainage. If all the buildings are existing and everything, we, uh, we can go look back as, uh, before the owner bought the property, that there were no, there were no changes done to it as, so whoever installed, uh, whoever built that building, they built it with the, with the permit, I think, back in twenty, uh, nineteen, which was before the owner, uh, the owner purchased the, the property. Uh, so, um, with that, I'll open it to any questions from, uh, uh, any of the board members.
Thank, thank you for that presentation. Um, I, I have some questions. I'll, I'll hold for a minute. Um, with mine, are there any comments or questions from those on the commission at this time? Okay. Um, so in these types of scenarios, um, we're talking about people's livelihoods and, um, government has to find like the right balance, right? And, um, how the use of one property owner infringes on another. And so when I look at these in my head, I, I try to make that balance. One of the challenges I'm having right now is as I listen to the staff report, it almost felt like there, and Darren, maybe you can, um, enlighten me on this. Has there not been a lot of interaction between applicant and the county? Because there was, uh, and the reason I ask that question, it's, uh, we're unable to determine whether someone lives in the home, those, those types of things. Like there was a lot of that kind of, um, those kind of comments within the report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there has, there has been a lot of dialer back and forth and iterations. Uh, staff believes we have not received information that allows us to, uh, come up with alternative stipulations for approval. But, uh, regardless, this would appear to be a proposal that, that staff, uh, is almost certainly unlikely to recommend approval of and is recommending denial.
Okay. Thank you for that information. We will, uh, that, that's fine for me at this point. Are there any other, um, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna open this for public comment and I will reserve some time for, uh, the applicant to, to rebut. And, um, the, the commission will have time to ask more questions as well if they want. But, um, let's go ahead and thank, unless I don't hear anything at this point, we'll go ahead and move on to the public comment, if that's okay with the commission. Answered my phone on accident. All right. So let's start with, um, do we start with those in, in the room or do we, are we gonna go on? How, how many? Let me, let me just start with that. For, for staff, how many, um, people do we have that are requesting to speak online?
We have two that are registered on the agenda and at this point there are no others that have indicated a desire to speak.
Okay. So we don't have a lot. And those two are the cards I have in my hand or those are two that are online?
I think they're both there.
Okay. Great.
Uh, actually, I take it back. Uh, Mark Wright is online. He's the second one listed on the agenda. And you also have Sandra Luedke, who I believe is in person.
Yeah. I do have Sandra here in person.
Mark, Mark Wright is the other person I show and I have him available to queue up to speak on, when you get to that point.
All right. Let's, let's start with the in-persons and then we'll queue up after that so you can be ready for it. Let's, um, let's start with Sandra, uh, Luedke or, yeah, if you want to come on up to the mic right here and, uh, glad to have you here. We'll, um, there's not, not a, a lot of, uh, people on this today. We, we try to keep these around three minutes. I won't be super crazy if, won't cut you off right on the moment if you're.
Cut me off?
No, if you're, if you're doing a good job, so.
All right. My name is Sandra Luedke. I reside at three eight eight one six North Fifteenth Avenue. For over fourteen years, my husband and I have called this place home. We have enjoyed the rural lifestyle that has been protected and preserved over the years and many, even though many new homes have continued to be built up, it's still a neighborhood with a rural touch and that's because of the ordinances, um, and our neighbors that are in place. We know each other. We look out for each other. I own horses and mules and you can see me out there almost every day riding. Um, my home is directly across the street from the business entrance to Exquisite Stone, Leo Isfons Granite Cutting Business. I do not believe Leo lives there. I see him come and go every day. When you do a Google search, you get an address that comes up somewhere over in Tremont. Um, at one time when we spoke with him out in the road, he said that James and him, his son had bought the place. And that, and I don't know what the case is now because I've never been invited over there, but that his one son was going to live there, one was going to live in the RV, the daughter, I think. I don't know that that's the arrangement now, but that was something that was communicated to us over a year ago. This has been going on for a year and a half. Um, anyway, he doesn't, um, I see him come and go pretty much every day. They've owned the place since December of twenty twenty and since then have made many changes, several of which violate ordinances and many of the changes were never permitted. I find that his disregard for laws in my neighborhood does not promote the peace that, that we all move there for and then it's supposed to be, you know, promoting the rural lifestyle in that area. I protest this SUP. One shouldn't be able to have exceptions made to the zoning ordinances, but rather they should have to cease and desist and move to a location where this type of industrial business is acceptable. It's created a lot of turmoil in the neighborhood. Sorry, my voice changed. Anyway, I never had, I never did see an SUP until the third one, until the third supplemental and that's when Rachel Applegate sent it to me. Um, and that was at the end of April. The last time I heard from Daniel, the representative that we just all heard from, was on January tenth. When he responded to a letter of concern I sent him, after talking to my neighbors, and we are neighbors in that area. Um, I think I'm the only one that did get a response. So it's been since January. I know my husband never got a response. Um, since that time, either Daniel or the Isfons have communicated with me. They have never ceased to operate their business, though. I, um, well, I had three photos up. They were up when I came up here. Yes. Okay, back one. You go, yes. And I put those up there just as a reference. The first one, um, is where they previously were located. And I believe that was two two four oh five North Twenty-third Avenue, which is basically a industrial area. It's just north of Deer Valley Road on Twenty-third. And um that's an aerial view just taken from Google. But you can see that Exquisite Stone is labeled there. You can see Waste Management Transfer Station. You can see a glass shop. You can see several. My husband and I took the time to drive past that. Um because if you look up their address, if you look up Exquisite Stone, that's the address that comes up. So we took the time to drive past there. It was a little scary, you know, um intense. You'd hate to see my neighborhood begin to look like that. Um but that's where that's where they previously were located. Is my understanding or that's what Google says? Um it's the kind of place, though, that you expect that business to be. And he says in um I think on their website, he says that Leo's been in business for twenty years. You can't tell me the person that's been in business for twenty years doesn't know something about ordinances. The second picture in the middle is a picture taken in December of twenty twenty, just when about the time they purchased it. The outbuilding is that is correct. Uh Tommy and Lauren were the previous neighbors there and we knew them. Um they had that building built and it was permitted but did not include utilities. If you take a look at the driveway from Fifteenth Avenue that comes up to that outbuilding, it's I don't know the technical term for it, but it's kind of that rolled rock or granite or something like that. It was not blacktop um as it became. The fence on the west side was a no-climb fence, which is a typical horse fencing that you'll find in the neighborhood with shading on it. It's no longer a that type of fence. It's a seven and a half foot block fence on that side. Those were two of the changes. If you look at the third picture then on the right, that's how it that's the most recent aerial. That fence on the west side is now a block fence. That was one of the first things that was changed after they moved in. The blacktop, it's kind of hard to see. Not all of that is. Some of it's rock. But some of it, because I had to go over and ask them to move a truck for me when they were doing that, was blacktop that was put in. So yes, there are concerns with drainage permitting, several things um that took place at that time. The list kind of goes on and on. Once I got that SUP from Rachel on the third one, like I said, that was the first one, it was like there were so many omissions in the diagram or things that weren't labeled correctly. You can see on that outbuilding at the end, there's a little in the um right-hand corner. That's where the generator was. And I'm talking about like a hospital-sized backup generator. You could hear it over my diesel truck. It was so loud. And so when I I'd ride by there and, you know, take pictures, I took video that I included in the report also um of just how loud that is. Um on the right hand, and that's omitted in the in the third SUP. Um any mention of that generator. And one of the things I didn't understand, because I kind of looked through the permitting process and it says that they um one of the permits was for a propane tank to operate an existing generator. That's a diesel generator. I'm pretty sure it stinks every time it starts up. So I'm I'm pretty sure that's what that is. So I don't know where the propane tank, because that's not on the diagram either in the SUP where the propane tank is that they got permitted, and I don't know where that generator is. But then again, I've never been invited over there. There's a RV on the left-hand side. You know, I don't know what it's used for. I don't know. The air conditioner is going all the time on it. Um it's got, but it's there. Um it goes on and on. Uh on the backside, they they plywooded, put plywood around that generator now. At first, it was just open and then they eh put plywood around it. And I question whether that's a fire hazard or not around the generator. I know that they previously applied for the four hundred amp electrical service panel so that they wouldn't have to use the generator. So I don't know how they're operating now without the use of the generator, if that's what they're stating.
If you could wrap it up in like an another minute or so, that'd be great. It's your house, so I'm like, I'm I'm giving you lots of time because we don't have a lot here today and we want to hear it from you, so.
The rad container, the roll-off container is not in the SUP. There's no mention of that. And then they've taken wood pallets, like I used to store my hay on, and added that to the fence on the south side, as I'm not sure why. Um but these omissions only add to the existing distrust that has been created in the neighborhood. Um I shared the second picture, the next picture. This this arrived two weeks ago. If you can change the slide. That's a rental forklift. They've already have forklift on the property, but that's a rental forklift that arrived on June second was there for about two weeks. And the um large trucks came and go, came and went through the la- throughout the last couple of weeks. And that forklift was in action and I did send some pictures of that also. Um I think that when a neighbor feels he is entitled to run his business despite ordinances and objections from neighbors, demonstrates a total disregard and lack of respect for the law and those neighbors. Not asking for permission from the beginning when you know um you should is a willful and premeditated act, parallel to a popular belief that it is better to ask for forgiveness rather than permission. This belief leads to a feeling of entitlement and those rules and ordinances do not apply to them. However, those rules and guidelines provide boundaries to keep us safe and live in a community where we know what is expected and therefore promote the peace. This peace has been disrupted. Thank you.
Thank you. Um any questions for um? How do you say your last name?
Luedke.
Luedke, Sandra Luedke. Any questions by commission? All right, thank you. Appreciate it. We'll hear from uh Charles Philippeck. Come on, come on down. If you just state your name and um address, that would be great. And um try to not, you know, uh in in consideration of all the time, just um things that may not have been said or presented. Like, we'd love to hear your perspective. So, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, uh I'm coming across. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, members of planning and zoning. My name is Charles Philippeck. My address is three eight eight one six North Fifteenth Avenue, Desert Hills, Arizona, eight five oh eight six. And Sandra Lucky is my wife. Okay, uh it's been going on about fifteen years. One of those types of neighborhoods that you can drop a pin and not and and maybe hear it. It's just been a very quiet. We have in the past year and a half about a dozen, maybe fourteen, fifteen brand-new dwellings that have gone up in this neighborhood all around the million-dollar mark. So it's 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 a it's a neighborhood of pride and there's there's just a lot of people that have come there to do what most families do. Um raise a family, uh take care of each other, be very proud and earn the retirement for those of us that are retired. I'm representing about eighteen retired people there that just couldn't make it here today. And uh it's just one of those things where you look at uh why are we going through so much conflict this at this point in our life? Um I know this is something you won't see, but uh my bio is very brief. I spent in the sixties, I spent um six years in the United States Navy, three years in a combat zone. And after I got out of that, I went into uh working in financial services and that's what brought me to Arizona in nineteen eighty-six, where I was made the Director of Asset Management for Discover Financial Services, a job I had for forty-eight years. Um I had to deal with a lot of conflict during those days because we were relocating to here. As you know, we have a big facility on I seventeen and Beardsley Road where I had a plan with the county and the governor's office, a home for forty-five hundred employees. To stay uh devoted to uh my flag, my country and my community, I was offered a position as uh with the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office where I was a lieutenant and the enforcement support posse. So I had that going on in my life at that point. And then I retired from that. And so currently today, I'm the president of the Deer Valley Education Foundation, which is a financial arm of the Deer Valley Unified School District, thirty-two thousand families um and students. So I love this community. That's why I do this stuff. And just to look at some of the notes and some of the things that to to me was kind of like, I'm not going to call it appalling, but it it may be object to the flagrant disregard of all the all the all the things that I think everybody knows. You've seen the hundred-and-twenty-page report. Um I think the biggest concern I had was was the operation was in full swing. It's it's it it's the noise that attracts you to the situation. And it doesn't matter if the business shuts down at four PM. Everybody's home during the day, so at four PM, uh I which was one of the responses that we received. Uh also, I was fascinated by the fact that the kids are being dropped off on the intersection of Fifteenth Avenue and Irvine. And uh the trucks that come in, they have to pass them. There is no schedule for delivery trucks. There is schedule for school buses. And as part of the Deer Valley Education Foundation, I know exactly when those buses show up. And over the last fifteen years, we've seen many kids get on that bus and get off that bus. And we see them walking down the street and walking down the street back to their home. The reason being, no sidewalks. I want you to visualize this. There's no sidewalks. So trucks come out and when trucks are going in, and and my wife loves this, to let you know that I'm here with the delivery, they pull the air horn. Now, if you're on a mule, you're going to get a nice ride as soon as they hear that going off. And I know that might sound silly, but that's the that's that's part of the nature of the the concern on on a normal life. So it's it's uh the the last comment was there was a concern about the weight of the trucks that were coming in. And there's like a three-hundred-foot circle. Uh these trucks are way surpassing that three-hundred-foot because they they don't come down from the sky. They have to come up Carefree Highway, up Seventh Avenue to Irvine. Here comes the trucks and most of them are coming north. So my guess is that a majority of these uh trucks and deliveries are coming up Seventh Avenue, then west, and then back up on Fifteenth Avenue. So um it's the noise, it's it's the conflict. Um I've dealt with a lot of conflict. I'm seventy-four years old. I'm tired of dealing with conflict. Uh but I'm ready to trade conflict in for peace, clarity and insight. And that's the only reason why I'm here. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Philippeck. Appreciate it. Uh we have one person online, I believe.
Good morning. This is Mark Wright.
Good morning. If you'll just state your name and address, try to hold your um comments to three minutes if you can.
Yes, sir. Good morning and thanks in advance for listening to our concerns. My name is Mark Wright. I live at thirty-eight seven one zero North Fifteenth Avenue. I am one of the properties that is within three hundred feet of the business in question. I purchased my house in October twenty nineteen, kind of my dream home where I planned on retiring. And to respect everybody's time, I'm not going to repeat all the comments that have been noted already today. However, I want to echo Sandy's comments as well as all the objection comments noted. As a result of this business, it has significantly diminished me and my neighbors' quality of life. I would hope that everybody takes that into consideration as they make this very difficult decision. I can let you know I have spoken to the owner before to voice my concerns with the generator. That was approximately sixty-nine months ago. I think it's worthy to note that when I spoke to the owner, he did tell me that he lived north of Twenty-seventh Avenue and Carefree Highway, which would be Tremonto. In addition, I think it's worthwhile to note that the industrial-sized generator can be heard while I'm working in my office in my house as well as in my bedroom. It's extremely disappointing that the owner chose not to do anything about the noise of the generator until the week before this meeting. I'm extremely disappointed in how the owner's handled the neighbors' concerns as well as the quality of life that he's impacted. In conclusion, I'm requesting your consideration to deny the operation of special use permit for this business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um appreciate that and the conciseness. Um is there anyone else that's um here in the room or online that wishes to speak on this issue? Yeah, if you if you you'd like to um come up and we'll have you fill out a card and you can speak first and then fill out the card. We can do that, right? That's allowed? All right.
Okay.
If you'll just state your name and yeah, address kind of where you're at.
My name's David Ellis. Uh I own the property at fourteen forty West Irvine Road, which is south of the property in question. Uh I have not filed a letter or a complaint yet, but I am stating that I am opposed to this project. I've had to listen to this generator for over a year now. They have no uh regard for anybody in the neighborhood. Maybe you would like to hear this. This is what we listen to all day long. That's basically all I have to say. I'm opposed to this project.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Um and then did you get a card for it? If you'll just you can take it back to your seat with you and fill it out. Just make sure you give it to Rosalie before you leave so she we have your information. So thank you. Appreciate it. Any others at this time? All right, um we'll go ahead and close public comment. Um we'll open up for the uh I did tell the applicant I would give them um a few minutes to rebut some of the um issues that have come up. So if the applicant would like to take, um I'll give five minutes to talk about those issues that have brought up been brought up if they would like.
Yes, uh I will actually wanted to know if I can relinquish my time to the owner who's in the audience and you would like to address and respond if that's if that's allowed and possible.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm totally good with that. If the owner would like to come up.
The owner does, then he can address as far as who lives and all this. So I'll let I'll relinquish my time to him.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leon Risvan and I'm the owner of uh Exquisite Stone. Um almost two years ago, we purchased the property, which had a shop on it. And then we did our research in regards to what can be operated on the on behalf of a business, a family business. So based on that and then we never had anything specified that we are not allowed to have uh uh like a granite shop. What I wanted to do is I want to just explain to you how our business is. Our business, it's actually in two categories. Number one is we get, uh like you see now, a lot of the stuff is made in China and then they deliver through pallets. And then we bring it to our shop. We take it out of the pallets. We put them on our trailers and then we deliver like Daniel mentioned. The second part, which is a very small part of it, is the fabrication. We only have my son who cuts and then we have another gentleman that works there and he fabricates. Fabrication means he polish and he does all that. Before we did any of this work, we made sure before we opened the shop, we made sure that there is no problem with the water, uh dust and noise. The problem with the noise was uh delayed due to the fact that we apply at least several times for uh for us to get uh approval for getting more power to the property. The problem we had is due to the fact that Maricopa County, they came several times out. Uh they gave us the okay and then a day before we're supposed to get the um APS to come in and give us the the power, uh they stop us. So in the meantime, we were in a crunch time. Uh you have to understand the family, it's um it's and the business is owned by me, but I work with three sons. My daughter, my son-in-law and my nephew, and we only have one person that is from outside fam. Um I have very good courteous uh uh relationship with my neighbors, the ones that you just talked. I went to their house uh when we first met. There was no issue at that time. We explained, I explained to them uh the business that my intentions were and they had no problem. Uh I took all the precautionary things. It's like to build a fence. I mean, it's not uncommon. Right now, you drive on Fifteenth Avenue, you drive down on uh Irvine, you will see fences up and down. It's it's something common. It's not something uncommon. So I put a fence so it doesn't disturb anybody. Also, I submit myself to the requirements of the Maricopa, which they told me to put another wood fence in front, which I did. All these times that uh we received complaints, they always came out and they couldn't find anything wrong. They couldn't find anything wrong with the noise. They came at least two times or three times, if I'm not mistaken. At one point, even the police uh was actually called in saying that uh the plywood that I put to actually block uh most of the noise uh from the generator is actually a fire hazard, which wasn't, but the police uh disregards all that. I mean, also, another thing is that He, I mean, also, another thing is that I've been trying to work through the process to continue. I mean, you have to understand it's our livelihood. We live off of this. It's, we don't do anything to make anybody angry. We didn't do anything to, you know, take somebody off. We, we did everything that we could. This is how we live. This is our livelihood. And I've been licensed for such a long time. I didn't break any law because I thought, hey, if this one doesn't specify that, uh, you cannot have a granite shop here. I mean, I wouldn't have been a blind man to buy the property in the first place. Now, I bought it and I upgraded and I can say that I upgraded up to almost $200,000 I invested in this property. I invested, yes, I put, I put blacktop on it so there is lesser dust, you know, by driving over. I even put, uh, my coterminers throughout so there is, when the trucks are, uh, uh, driving, there is no dust, you know, raised up. In the morning, so I'm just trying to go back, in the morning, we load up the trailers. It takes about an hour, an hour and a half. They load it up from seven to eight, eight-thirty the latest. And sometimes we do it in the afternoon, like three o'clock to four, four-thirty. And then the first thing they do in the morning, start their truck, they take off. I do the same thing. So, um, I know that the concern is, my, my concern is also, uh, that I didn't want it to actually upset any of the customer, I mean, any of my neighbors. Uh, I did everything that I could. I even changed right now, as I said, I have, uh, just about two weeks ago, I was able to get a motor that transforms from one phase to three phase. So that, that's doable. So there's no more generator whatsoever. So we won't start it. We actually already put it for sale. The only thing is that if anybody wants to come in less than 40 feet from the shop, I mean, we work with the doors closed 95% or 98% of the time. Only when we move the forklift, the door is open. But in reality, we always work with the closed doors. Uh, our walls are very, uh, uh, secure in a sense, has insulation, the doors has insulation. So if you come in 40 feet from my, from, from the shop, you won't hear a thing. That been proved by Maricopa at least two or three times when they showed up. And the thing is, I don't wanna upset anybody. The only thing is I wanna just to operate my business because the livelihood of my family, my children, which I wanted to leave, uh, you know, all the things that I worked for, yes, I wanted to leave it to them. Uh, in regards, I heard that people were saying, well, I was in a different area. It's true. At that point, I was running way bigger operation than right now. So what I tried to do is I tried to cut size because of the economy, economy and the COVID and all that. I cut back and then I said, I'm gonna just work with my kids. And that's where I'm at. I'm not here to, you know, blame people that, you know, they don't, they don't approve. But as I said, all their concern is being actually, um, addressed. So when you talk about water, we don't discharge any water into any sewer or anywhere. What we do, we recycle, take the bags, throw it in the trash. We have a big dumpster that they come and then, uh, once a month or depends on how soon we need it. Another thing is the pallets that we take the stuff out, they do not sit there permanent. We cut it into pieces, we put it in the trash and it's not something that is being like this, you know, forever. And then we pile up garbage and garbage and garbage. Uh, we are actually keeping, maintaining our property very clean. I never complain about, you know, my neighbors', you know, mules at midnight when, you know, they start calling and my grandchildren run into their parents, uh, how, I mean, in the bed and starts scared. What's, what was that? Well, I understand, I moved it. I don't complain about it. I don't complain about the fleas that are all over. I mean, you can't even stay outside because you get fleas in your mouth because animals, I understand that. I was part of me moving there. I don't think what, I don't know, um, what did I do wrong in this point to be actually punished in such a way, not to be allowed to operate my business due to the fact that I did everything, uh, that I knew according to the rules that been written. And I didn't have no, uh, sanctions from Maricopa. They would have told me the first time they would come up, hey, you cannot run a business. I submit myself, I, I even followed their direction in everything that they request. Building the fence, make sure there is no noise, make sure that there is no dust. Everything I did it according to their recommendation. So right now, I want, I don't want it to be denied. If this one is denied, you put my livelihood with the, with my other six children that actually, I mean, it's gonna be a problem. I mean, I have 13 grandchildren, they're gonna be, you know, with, without income from one of the parents. And that's what I'm saying. It's, i- it is difficult. Uh, my son lives in a house. My, uh, daughter-in-law with three grandchildren from six to four months, three months, they all live in a house. My daughter and her husband, they do live in a house. It's not something unbearable or something that we disturb people. We don't. You could go anytime, drive by. And then the third, the lastly, it is in regards to deliveries. There's a lot of com, talk about deliveries. We get a big delivery with the pallets once every two to three months. Okay, that's not every day, it's not every week. Yes, we do sometimes get, uh, uh, granite from Arizona tile. It comes either with the trailer and we pick it up with our forklift, put it on the, on the, uh, on the rack and they, they get, they just leave. And it's not, I know there was a, I don't know, there was a lot of confusion among the, the, how much the, the trucks are. I'll tell you, the truck, the weight of the truck of a garbage truck that I have to listen every morning when he backs it up into the, into the street and pick up people's garbage is as heavy as one of those trucks. It's not bigger than that. So that's all my concern. I mean, uh, with all due respect, uh, please do not deny this or reconsider allowing me to operate because that's our livelihood. We're not doing this to, to, to upset anybody. We are doing this just because this is our livelihood. And I, I appreciate your, uh.
Thank, thank you. Thank you for being here and presenting that. Um, I, um, I do have a couple of questions and I think, um, others may as well. You know, I, I clearly can see that you've taken steps to try to be a good neighbor with screen walls and pavement and those types of things like that. That's, I, I can see that. The, the generator, I think, was a really big issue and I, it sounds like that issue's been fixed.
Yes.
Um, to say, I, I heard you say, we've done things to stay quiet, but you have ran a generator, like, for a long time. Just because you have doesn't mean that, that, just because you did something in the past that may have bothered someone to me, um, if you're moving forward in a way that works, like, I'm more open to that. But I, I do wanna just acknowledge that, that I, I see that. I think you answered my question as far as who is living in the house. It's your daughter and son and grandkids, um, that are actually living in the house. Darren, um, for you cottage, cottage, uh, business, just remind, we've had this discussion before, uh, you and I. Remind me just what's permitted and not permitted on a cottage.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, the ordinance has been quite liberalized over recent years. And the, the one significant perexit is that the proper, proprietor needs to reside on site. If that's documented, they may proceed with a, a special use permit for cottage industry. It's just that it's, it's staff's opinion that the level of this business triggers need for industrial zoning. And we would not support cottage industry for home-based business.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions by the commission for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we'll go, um, Commissioner McGee and then we'll go to Commissioner Swart.
Thank you very much. Uh, two questions for, uh, the applicant. First of all, are, are you attesting here that in fact you do reside on the property?
What does that mean that if I live in the property?
Yeah, I, uh, for clarity, it's, do you, do you personally live on the property? I, I, I understood it to be your daughter and, and son, but I think that's the question.
I don't live there, but I'm there pretty much 12, 14 hours every day, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have a family member or family members who work in the business who live on the property?
Yes, three of them.
And then my other question is you, you said, and your architect said, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, that you checked. And I'm sure the ordinance didn't specify granite production, but what exactly did you check? And how did you check through? I mean, because I'm, uh, full disclosure, I'm reading Article 501.2 in the Maricopa County zoning or ordinances and I will speak to those in a minute. What did you check?
What we check is this, what kind of a business is allowed? And if, uh, the people that, how many people are allowed to work and how people from outside, they're not members of the family are allowed to work. And we also, uh, came in contact twice with, uh, Maricopa County, the person that, uh, I forgot her name, and also the gentleman that retired not long ago. I spoke personally with him. They, uh, they encouraged me. I told them what my business is and I told them, uh, this is what are my steps. And the only thing they told me, they did not tell me that you cannot have that business. He said, for your safety and security, so nobody will bother you, it's better to apply for the permit. I said, do I have to stop? They said, no, as far as, uh, we are concerned, you're not breaking any rules or any laws in a sense. So you are just, uh, do the recommendation, which I did, uh, fenced the front and tried to, uh, block the noise from the generator by putting doors up there. That's all I did at that point. And then, uh, we were just waiting at all this time. Due to the COVID situation, we were just waiting.
Right. Uh, so that, that was, you had conversations with county officials. It, it, nothing was written down. It was just a conversation and they.
It was a conversation over the phone, ma'am, yes.
Okay.
Actually, I was driving towards Pace and when I was with my daughter and my son-in-law in the car when we're driving, I pull over the, the side of the road and we discussed the situation.
Yes.
And they encouraged me at that time to go ahead and apply for the permit, uh, even though it's expensive. I said, I will do it just, you know, so it's, everybody's on the same, uh, page. So I don't wanna break any rules or, you know, I'm not here to, you know, jump the horse or do anything else. I was just trying to follow the procedures that they recommend.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Isfan. I, I recognize that that was not your intent, um, and that we have a number of these types of issues come before us where the property owner is, is operating and doesn't realize they are in violation of, of the ordinances. So it's an after-the-fact type approval. Um, and I wanted to circle back, Mr. Chairman, with county officials. Is there any record of this conversation or conversations on their end and could they speak to that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McGee, there is an open violation, uh, V 2021 00525 due to complaints as early as March and July of 2021. And after those notices of violation, the applicant came in for a pre-application meeting in August of 2021. Uh, was told to obtain a special use permit or cease to desist. They did not file that special use permit application until, uh, well, they filed that especially like application in October. However, due to lack of progress, the violation case was carried to a hearing six months later in April of 2022. Because we expect a, a special use permit to process within a six-month timeframe, particularly i- if there is, uh, a fire lighted to spur timely compliance due to violation. So there is a judgment the applicant, the property owner should have received, you know, has received this judgment. Uh, they were found responsible for the violation. They're, uh, ordered a non-compliance fine of a hundred dollars and a hundred dollars per day. Uh, but the, I believe the daily fines will be dismissed if they obtain compliance either through ceasing and desisting the use or special use permit approval by the board supervisors before August 17th.
Um, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no further questions for Mr. Isfan, but I didn't know if my fellow commissioners did. So I do have some follow-up questions for staff.
All right, let's, uh, go ahead and see if there's any other for the applicant, then we can come back to you, Commissioner McGee.
I had asked to speak, Mr. Chairman.
That's right. Thank you, Commissioner Swart. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I wanna just start out by saying I 100% agree with staff, uh, far beyond the 32 reasons they gave for denial in this case. And I'll just be very candid with you. Uh, I listened carefully to every witness. I listened carefully to the architect and the owner. And for this owner to say that he has this great relationship and he's been nothing but cooperative and conciliatory to this neighborhood is outrageous. And it's shameful and it's not the truth. I listened to these people who talked about their backgrounds and serving our country and the disruption and all the things that this has caused. And if in his mind, that believes that he has a great relationship, then, uh, I, I'm in, in shock over it. Uh, this is a shameful case. Uh, these folks have worked hard. They've lived there, they represent many other people. And I'm hoping that, uh, my other colleagues will also talk about this case. It, the comment that one of the speakers made blatant disregard, I think it's beyond that. This is just simply outrageous. And the staff worked very hard to point out to us all of these reasons. This applicant simply says he's never done anything wrong and that he's got this fabulous relationship and it's, it's all the county's fault. It's everybody's fault but his own. And to me, I will tell you that when everybody's done speaking, I would like to request that you let me make the motion for a strong denial. I've just, I, I'm just in shock over this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Swart.
May I respond?
Uh, yeah, feel free to. You're here.
The, uh, the gentleman that you heard, uh, yes, I did, uh, he did invite me into his house. I did talk to him. I talked to him afterwards. Uh, we do have a relationship. I don't think that we have any, uh, bad blood between ourselves. We salute each other when we see each other. It's not, uh, uh, I mean, to be accused that I, I'm lying, that I don't have a relationship, that's kinda odd. I mean, that's the only thing I'm, I wanna say. I did talk to the gentleman. He's actually a, a very nice person. I met them both. I went, they invited me to their house and so on and so forth. I went into their house and afterwards we talked several times. Uh, and then we salute each other every time we see each other. So, uh, I'll just leave it at that.
Uh, thank you. I, and I, and I like to focus more on the use and, and whether this is a good fit than get into intentions or, um, try to get in your head. I'm not gonna try to get in your head on your intentions and why, why you do and do, don't do things. But I, I will say, um, you know, when you, when we look at this as, at a, as a zoning, uh, case, and especially in this case, as a special use permit, um, you know, that's what, what I'm looking at is, what is the quiet use and enjoyment of the neighbors around you? How are, how are they impacting you? How are, how are you going to impact them? And that's where I'm making my, my decisions. It's not, um, if, if you've acted in a bad way in the past, and I'm not saying you have, but if you have, and there's a way that we can a- act in the future that helps you preserve your livelihood and, and, and I'm trying to find that way, right? And make it where the neighbors can enjoy their property and you can enjoy your property as well. That's, that's where my head is and that's where I'm always trying to move. It's not so much what happened in the past, but is there a way that this can move forward? And so, um, I just wanted to say that. Um, is there any other, I, I'll, I'll let the applicant sit down if there's not any other questions for the applicant at this time. All right, thank you. Thank you for presenting. We're gonna go ahead and discuss as a, uh, we'll close public comment and, um, discuss as a, as a commission. Commissioner McGee, you had some questions for staff. We'll start with you.
Well, it's not questions for staff, just clarification. If we look at our big books and we look at Article 501.2.10, clearly this business does not meet, uh, the definition that's outlined of home occupations, cottage industries. And that generated then the need for a special use permit, uh, as specified in 601.2.8, as I understand it. But when I read both of those sections, there are impossibilities related to the business conforming with the special use or with the cottage industry definition. That's why I was trying to figure out what, who Mr. Isfan checked with and why. I know that this commission respects the right of each homeowner and each property owner to use their property, um, the way that they intend. And, um, I have kinda learned the hard way to do that as well. Uh, but this is, it goes beyond in terms of reading those two sections, 501.2.10 and 601.2.8. Practically every condition is in violation by virtue of the operation of this business, which generated the 32 reasons staff said we cannot recommend approval. Is that? Is that an accurate statement, Darren?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McGee, real quickly, the, the reference in Chapter Five is the Use Regulations for the Rural Zoning Districts. And Chapter Six is the Use Regulations for Single Family Residential Zoning Districts. Those are essentially the same. And that's, that's for the home-based businesses. If you were within those parameters, you are entitled. And entitled to use. Staff determined that the existing operation is not within those parameters. Therefore, they have to get a special use permit and that's Chapter Thirteen.
But they won't, they will not then, Mr. Chairman and members, they will not still be in conformance with the things that they need to do to operate this business in a way that respects their neighbors. So, and with all due respect to Commissioner Swart, it is in my district. I would like to make the motion and I would appreciate Mr. Swart's strong second.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll just comment real quick, Commissioner McGee. You know, on the SUP side, you know, it's our determination to decide conditions and things that, that worked, that would make it where this could be a business that conforms with the neighborhoods around it. Unfortunately for me, I do not believe the applicant has been able to establish, you know, the burdens on them to show a way in which they can run their business and not impact the neighbors. And unfortunately for me, because I know this does impact this family that I'm sitting here and looking at, that, that it, it, they have not done a, a good enough job in providing parameters in which this could be a compatible SUP within the neighborhood. And that's just my personal opinion. So any other comments? Yeah, Commissioner Arnett, I see you raising your finger there.
Yeah, so, so this, this actually wasn't as easy for me as it has been for the other commissioners. Because at the end of the day, the reason of here is for an SUP, they can have a business, they can do things. But the reason we go through this process is when it's outside of that, of what can happen, then they get that SUP and they would be a legal conforming business. I'm sympathetic to the landowner. This is his livelihood and someone lives there, I understand that. I think they, they, it looks like, you know, we can mitigate noise. You've heard me say before that, that frankly, there's other noises much louder than the generator, but this is an industrial generator, right? That, you know, whether it's horse trailers and, and hay dump trailers and, and trash. And I mean, so I can get around the noise. I can get around a lot of things. And I'm super sympathetic to this, this, this homeowner. And, and I think they're trying to do everything that they possibly can. However, it feels industrial, right? And, and that's where I keep coming back to. Because if it was a quieter business, if the deliveries were less frequent, if, you know, I, I bet the neighbors probably get hay as much as he probably does his granite. So I don't have a problem with any of that. But it's the old adage, if it looks like a duck and talks like a duck, it's a duck, right? So this feels industrial to me, which is a little out of line. And I've been just going through the aerials, I've been going down the road and Google and all the different things. And it, it, it just feels like it's, it's too far. And so that's why I, I just can't support this. But not for all the reasons that, that were kind of talked about. Quite frankly, I think the homeowner's done a very good job of trying to mitigate all the things. The problem is there's too much industry going on, on that residential property for me to support it. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Commissioner Arnett, and I echo a lot of your comments. I, I could have got to a yes, I think, on this with some minor changes in the operations and things. But the way it's been presented, I, I can't get there. I want to get there, I just can't. Any other comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner McGee.
Mr. Chairman, I move denial of case Z2021127 per staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner McGee. We have a motion to support the denial recommendation as presented by staff. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Swart?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Swart. We have a second. Let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Approved for denial.
Commissioner McGee?
Nay. I mean, approved for denial.
I, I guess would be the denial, yes, just for clarity.
I hate these backwards ones. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Swart?
A strong yes for denial.
Commissioner Arnett?
I support the motion.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yeah.
Commissioner Montoya?
I believe the violations are egregious in nature and so therefore I approve denial.
And Chairman Lumblum?
Yes.
Chairman, that's a denial by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you. All right, those are the tough ones for us. Let's go ahead and move on to the next. I believe that's all the cases that we've handled. Is there any other business by the staff at this time that we need to address? Yep, I didn't think we had any. All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you all of you for your time and I apologize for my tardiness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Have a good day, all of you.
Thank you.
Bye.